Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. The time is 6:30 PM. I'm John Dewanzik, and this is the regular meeting of the Avon Lake Board of Municipal Utilities. With me tonight from the board is, to my left, Mr. Mondello; to my right, Mr. Ricky and Mrs. Schnabel; to my left in the empty seat isn't Mr. Rush, who is excused for tonight's meeting. We still have a quorum, and accordingly, we will, if we have motions to vote on, it will take a vote of three to pass any motion that we vote on. Tonight's meeting is being streamed on Facebook and YouTube. And if you are in the audience on those venues, you have an opportunity to give input, which will be monitored by Mr. Urinech, who's the Chief of Utility Operations at the table, along with Mr. Logan, who's the Business and Financial Coordinator; and also at the table is outside counsel, Mr. Anthony Coyne. And to my right, who I didn't mention yet, is the indispensable Chief Utility Executive, Robert Monroe. All votes will be taken tonight by voice vote, with the exception of a motion to go into executive session, which will be taken by a roll call vote. And I think that covers everything, Mr. Monroe.
Yes.
There's no one in the audience tonight on site here. Mr. Urinech will be shortly telling us whether there's any comments out there. So that brings us through the perfunctory. Let's move into the approval of minutes from the November 4th meeting. Are there any comments on those from the board?
No.
Hearing none, they are approved as submitted. Nice work on that, Mr. Urinech. Sorry I didn't get back to you last week. It just, time got away from me before the close of business.
Not a problem.
Okay, next item is public input. There's no one in the audience here, but you have any online?
There's no one online, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, moving snappily along, we'll go into correspondence, Mr. Monroe.
I don't want to mess up the flow, so I do not have any correspondence to pass along this evening.
Excellent work. You can like just ball up something to make it go faster.
No, sir.
Okay. Next item then is the approval of expenditures from October 31st to November 13th. Would someone like to make the motion?
I will.
Mr. Ricky, go ahead.
I move to approve the, excuse me, Avon Lake Regional Water expenses from October 31st, 2025 through November 13th, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Ricky. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Schnabel, discussion. Well, we want to give the audience some.
I do have just a comment on a couple of the funds that you see. For instance, on Fund 701, line item 51, ALRW fund transfers. And you can see other transfers on some of the other funds. Those are all budgeted transfers. For instance, the one on 701 is transferring money. It's listed, it says sewer construction fund. It's the sewer treatment fund. But what that represents is an expense from the water fund to the wastewater treatment plant, the sewer treatment plant, for treatment of residuals coming from the water plant. So those are all budgeted when the board approves the budget. So those transfers all took place. Again, like, for instance, on Fund 723, Distribution Fund, the Water Distribution Fund, line item 60, it's transferred to the Westridge Interconnect Fund. That represents our costs for the year of operating that joint venture with Alaria and Rural Lorraine County Water Authority. So just wanted to point those out.
I appreciate that, Mr. Monroe. I did ask you to bring that up at the meeting. I have a couple of questions. One is, it's kind of glaring at me a little bit this month. We have in both Fund 723, number 40, and Fund 722, a number 34, monthly merchant fees for utilities. That seems like people paying their bills with credit card.
Yes.
And costing us $5,000 a month.
Not every month.
No.
In a month such as this, the due date for the quarterly bills was October 20. So these fees represent those October transactions. So after every quarterly billing, they are pretty high like that. And it's not just credit card fees. It's also our fixed fees for the electronic fund transfers. Our overall merchant fees work out to a little under 2% of what our billing is.
Okay, well, 2% isn't too bad. But you know, a lot of gas stations charge you for paying by credit.
And to that effect, just to refresh everyone's memory, prior to 2020, if customers paid with credit cards, they pay that fee.
Right.
During the pandemic, with a lot of unemployed, out of work folks, as assistance to them, we absorbed those fees. We went through the transition in our system, our customer software, to Springbrook, now that that is online. Mr. Logan and I have discussed, we, number one, you need to shop where you're going to get the best rates. And number two, going back to our policy of paying with credit cards and the customer paying the fees.
Yeah.
So again, we want to make sure, though, that we get a good rate, though, doing that. So we are evaluating that.
What do you mean?
If all in, that 2% is super favorable.
It is.
Compared to.
Compared to what I pay. And to be fair, part of our fee, our fee being so small, and I mentioned this with Mr. Monroe, Mr. Urinech at one time, too, is that we're getting a utility discount.
Correct.
Through our merchant processor, which I'm not sure if that was there before COVID or not, with whoever the processor was. But we do get a pretty hefty. The fee was higher when the customer pays it. Yeah. Versus when the utility is paying it.
Would that be true if we went back to the customer absorbing the cost? That would the, would the bank make them pay more than us?
We would. I've analyzed it. I don't have all the data with me, and I do apologize. But we would, if we were to pass along a convenience fee, the fee to the customer, we would lose at least part of that utility discount, a good part of it. So there's a trade-off.
There's a balance there.
Okay, well. My other follow-up to that is if we were going to switch back to having ratepayers pay that fee, where, what do we see for disconnections now versus before? Are you getting a better and faster collection period with the cards than shutting these people off, sending notices and?
That's exactly part of the evaluation, is you have to, you have to look at the data prior and look at what our delinquencies were versus once we started absorbing the fees. Because for some, it is more convenient for them to pay with the credit card, so.
And for you, too, not to have to deal with.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I guess 2% is pretty small. Anyway, I thought I would ask about that. And it's not 5,000 a month, it's just 5,000 four times a year.
In those months after.
And then lastly, my question is, we have number 36 on Fund 722, and I think there's probably comparable ones on other funds, but this is for the 2024 financial audit. We paid to the treasurer of the state of Ohio.
The way the city laid that out this year, Mr. Chairman, was we, Avon Lake Regional Water, are paying our share, I forget what that share is. They set up, they being City Finance Department, a purchase order. And as they've made those payments, and they make them monthly as they get billed, they would charge whichever fund they hadn't charged yet. So they kind of went through that purchase order, fund by fund. This was the time for the Fund 722 to get charged their share. So I, again, I don't know, I can't remember the overall total. I want to say it was around $12,000 to $15,000 in that range, for us, for Avon Lake Regional Water, for the 2024 audit.
I'm taking it, Mr. Logan, that the audit passed with flying colors.
As far as I know, I know they had what's called an exit conference the other night for the 2024 audit. It goes through so many review channels that it's still not released out on the state auditor's website. I go out and look a couple of times a week to see if it's released yet. It's not been. But I know the finance director mentioned to me one day late last week that they had their exit conference, meaning the audit's complete. It's still got to go through whatever reviews in Columbus, but it'll get released probably very soon.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. I think that is all I had. Is there anyone else with any comments? Mr. Mondello?
Yeah, for 723, if you look at lines 34 through 38, that GL account, 53701, that one, that GL account goes across a couple of these funds.
Contract services, that's that account.
This is, for 723, this is the only one that has a, you know, kind of a big delta for the budget remaining. Is that just a learning of splitting this out across the different funds for this year?
I would say this has been the first year for Fund 723 and Fund 722. For that, and that, the way we laid out the budgets, just kind of fell this way, where maybe one of the funds, I think Mr. Ricky sort of brought it up last, two weeks ago, with the longevity expense, just, or you weren't here, though, but.
Yeah, I was.
But he did bring it up. But it's kind of the way the budgets fell in some of the funds this year, yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Mondello? Any other board members? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Okay, next item is quarterly financial updates, and the handoff is to Mr. Logan.
Okay, there is actually two pieces of information. Your board packet that was sent out on Friday. And this is through September. This is a standard sort of packet I've been putting together every month. The first couple pages just sort of go through the description and talk about any unusual things, of which there really truly aren't any. I think we're in pretty good shape budget-wise. But then the second piece of information that Mr. Monroe just put up on the screen. I put a hard copy in front of your workstations tonight for you to have. But this is sort of, and I'll get up, maybe kind of point a couple of things out as we go through this, but this is something that is more of a historical perspective. I thought maybe the board would like to see. I kind of went back a few years, and I took, a lot of the information is in here, out of the audits. Even though the '24 audit is not released yet, we do have the financial statements, the quote, "un-audited" financial statements at this point. But there's a few slides in here, only a couple, that I'd like to just walk through. So first one is what I'm calling expense coverage. And if you read through the September financial report, and any month that I do it, in that verbiage, I always talk about the number of months of expense that we've covered. And what that means is, you know, our funds on hand to cover normal sort of operating expenses. If no revenue came in from this point forward, how much money do you have? How long can you go? How many months of expense can you cover? And what this is saying is, going back to '22, about 12 times each year through September of this year, 10 and a half times. And these costs are covering, what I'm calling, again, normal operating costs. In other words, these don't include any property acquisition or any debt service payments, this column here. So as of the end of September, if no money came in in October, and going forward, we would have enough to cover about 11 months before we ran out of money. And then similarly, the far-right column, after those other costs, any property acquisition, and as you know, over the last few years, we've had $6.1 million of property acquisitions since the beginning of '22. And debt service is pretty steady each year, at about $7.5 to $8 million. But even after those, again, as the end of September, we're covering about six and a half months of expenses. I just made a comment down here. GFOA is Government Finance Officers Association, and they have best practices out on their website and publish things. They basically say that, you know, your general fund balance of, this isn't a general fund, it's not a normal city fund, these are obviously utility enterprise-type funds. But a general fund should have no less than two months of regular general fund operating expenditures. So you can see, we're pretty well above that.
Okay.
This chart is one that I've done as a finance director in the past, and always one that the credit rating agencies like to see this. They like to see your fund balance as a percentage of annual revenue. So what this says is, again, as of the end of September of this year, our fund balance is, and this is unencumbered fund balance, by the way, meaning before any purchase orders that are committed, but we're covering about, or we have about 68% of our annual revenues. So this, and it's been pretty consistent, again, going back to '22. So this table pretty much indicates that we have healthy reserves in our fund balances. And that if we were going out for a credit rating on our own, this particular chart would put us in that triple-A category for this, for this part of the overall credit rating. There's other pieces to a credit rating. But for the financial side, this is one that the agencies like to see, so.
Very good.
Stop me, it ain't time, too, if you have any questions, if the board has any questions. So the next chart, this is what's called net position. This is basically your private sector balance sheet, your assets less your liabilities. So this is what's remaining. In the private sector, it's retained earnings, basically. And in the government sector, this is our net position. This chart, I actually went back to 2015, but then from 2019 forward through the end of '24. And these numbers I did get out of the audited financial statements, other than '24, which is still unaudited, but the financial statements indicate this much. So as you can see, this has grown every year, again, going back 10 years. And truly, if you went back to the early days, the early 2000s, it would even be, show much more growth. So this is a pretty healthy position for the utility at this point in time. Over $102 million net position. Again, basically, think of a balance sheet with your assets on top, your capital assets, your cash, your accounts receivable, any other assets, your liabilities, which includes your pension liabilities down in that lower section. And then that net difference is the net position.
Do we have separate pension liabilities from PERS?
No, ours is all PERS, Obers. That's the only pension we deal with.
Okay.
Now, the city deals with police and fire and so forth. These next four slides just kind of reflect where our cash has been deposited since '22. So at the end of '22, the big blue diagram or chart is money that was in the bank, and it was Huntington Bank, which it still is Huntington. That little sliver of the orange, which is about $833,000, that was in Star, Ohio, again, as of the end of '22. This shows how much interest was earned and what the cash balance was in total. Up through the end of '23, I believe the city just made one entry at the end of the year to allocate interest income over to all the funds, really. But with Avon Lake Regional Water, it was based on fund balances. So whatever their interest earned was, our fund balances as a percentage of the total, and they came up with allocations, I believe, like that. '23, same thing, about $877,000 in Star. At the end of '24, then, once we got Finance Department to open up the floodgates and let us put some more money into Star, Ohio, we have $22 million as of the end of '24 in Star, about two-thirds of the total cash. And we earned interest last year of $838,000. '25, I estimated for end of year, so that's, this isn't really as of now, but through the end of the year, we should earn a little over $1 million of interest for the total year, with, again, about $27 million in Star, Ohio. $7.3 million in Huntington. So our cash balances have grown also over these last, these last four years.
And Star has the high rate on it.
They do. They're still at about 4.2.
And falling.
The Fed will take another 25%, 25 basis points, rather, down at their next meeting, more than likely. I'm kind of projecting next year at 3.5 to 3.75, but, yeah.
That's not too shabby.
And it is, does Huntington pay interest, or is it just a non-interest?
They do, but very, very minimal.
Under a percent?
I don't even know what it is, Mr. Mondello. It's under 2%, I know that.
Mr. Monroe, before we go on, unless I'm mistaken, we didn't get any interest on the balances that we put into the funds that was shared with the city. Is that correct? So this is a great improvement over 10 years ago.
Well, as Mr. Logan said, that prior to 2024, the, it was put, it was, the majority of our funds were kept in our Huntington account. And so whatever interest was earned, it was, it was minimal. The Finance Department would allocate that interest one time at the end of the year, based on what our fund balance is. And that was, again, that was, I can't speak to why it was done that way, but it was, what Mr. Logan and I worked on to, with the Finance Department, the new finance director, and we invested utility funds in Star, Ohio. That's, I mean, last year, we were, I believe it was over 5%, wasn't it? Or around 5%? It was a little over 5. Yeah. For a while. For a while. That we were earning interest on, so it is significant.
All right, so that's a great improvement, you know, more than pays for.
Right.
Mr. Logan's beauty treatments.
Yes. And I will remind the board, I will be coming back to you. We pass a resolution to allow us to begin working with Fifth Third Securities as well. Because with them, we can lock in a little better with two, maybe three-year sort of maturities, and not be at the mercy of the rates if they continue to fall, so.
Okay, very good. Sorry to interrupt.
So this chart just shows Avon Lake Regional's Water investment in capital assets and infrastructure. And one of the things that, since I've worked here now, not quite two years, that I see, that I, I mean, I didn't see it to this degree as a finance director for another city, but the capital improvement plan and the continual review of where we need infrastructure investment, where we need buildings, whether they're improvements or expansions or things like that, really very, very top-notch and managed very well. So there's three categories here. The big one, the big green bar, you know, the large, longest green bar, is infrastructure. So these are all the infrastructure dollars, capital assets on our balance sheet. Going back, again, I jumped, but went back to 2015, and then I'm showing 2019 forward. So as of the end of 2024, about $146 million. And this is, this is a cost of infrastructure assets. You can see land, land's the little shaded one in the middle. But land purchases, again, since 2022, we went from about $1.9 million now to over $7.5 million. Again, that's through '24. So I know earlier this year, we had about a $500,000 purchase of another piece of property by the, by the water plant. The other assets, then, are all your other, your vehicles, machinery and equipment. Buildings is the largest one in that category. And that's kind of steadily climbing as well. So this is, this is the, the hard assets, if you will, the tangible assets that you've, over the years, invested in off of rates, water sewer rates and everything. So that just reflects those assets. So, I mean, this is just basically the summary, but bottom line, you know, the net position is growing. There's strong cash reserves, well-planned investments in infrastructure we were just talking about. Certainly an ongoing capital improvement plan that, again, I'm very impressed with here, that I haven't seen in other places I've worked. OWDA debt, I'll mention Ohio Water Development Authority. As you know, most of that infrastructure, a good chunk of it, and some of the building improvements as well, are financed with OWDA debt, which is lower interest than general obligation debt. You don't need to go through a credit rating, and that doesn't go against, in our case, the city's borrowing capacity. Just to give you an idea, there's, right now, there's 20 OWDA loans outstanding for Avon Lake Regional Water, about $129 million principal amount on those OWDA loans, which with the longest maturity right now is out to 2050, the year 2050. And then the bottom bullet point with the board, knowing this, the customer water use rates are the lowest in the state, unless they've got their own well, maybe, but. So that's sort of a recap of everything. Again, you've got hard facts in front of you. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I'd like to maybe, down the road, we'll update this and maybe put some different information in it, if you'd like, but.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Logan before he sits down?
Very good.
Mr. Mondello, on the $129 million with OWDA, do you have an average interest rate on that? Or did ballpark?
I would guess 3.75 to 4, probably in that range. I mean, the more recent borrowings, the water plant improvement project, and we've not started paying debt service on it yet. And then the Water Bundle project we're doing now, those are a little bit higher, but a lot of the loans that they've got between, say, 2010 and 2021 are in that 3.75 to 4 range. I mean, just one loan in particular that was a large one, was when we did the water reclamation facility improvements. That was about $35 million, a little over $35 million. $17 million of that was at 0%. The remaining $18 million and change was at less than 1%. So it, again, that saved the ratepayers millions by leveraging very attractive market rates, and below-market rates, really, because of the way that the, you know, the board structured that. So that, and that's just one example. There's many others.
Mr. Logan, when do you expect the audit report to come out?
The 2024 audit? Like I was saying, really, any, any day.
Okay.
I would expect in the next few weeks. I'll.
Okay, so in some coming meeting, you'll give us a report on that?
On the actual audit.
Just like, kind of the highlights that you're doing here.
Yes.
But we would appreciate that. Thank you for your presentation. Next item is the rate study, Mr. Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a good segue to this topic. In 2021, we contracted with Raftellus for a rate study, development of a financial model, and also an asset valuation, looking at assets. That was, the official report was finalized in 2023. And so while we looked at that, to my knowledge, that was the first time a formal rate study by a third party was done. And it looked at not just user rates for sewer and water, it also looked at fees that are, that are charged for capping fees, you know. We even looked at lab fees that we charge for lab analysis. And, you know, that was based on capital improvement plan that we had in place at the time, identified projects, estimated costs. And as you know, some of those years, we did not.
Uh, and as you know, uh, some of those years, we did not, uh, adjust rates, uh, user rates to what was recommended, uh, because, uh, financially, as we just saw, uh, we were, we were in good shape. So that, that looked out, uh, that rate study looked out five years of recommended, uh, rates based on, uh, projected capital improvements. So what we have tonight, uh, for your consideration is an update to that rate study. Um, for some perspective, the original rate study, um, and I call it a rate study for short, but it was more than just a rate study. It was that financial model that was built out and then also the asset valuation. Uh, the not to exceed price on that in 2021, when the board authorized it, was $99,000 and change. Um, and so this, uh, that we have tonight, uh, is a not to exceed amount of $25,000. What this is going to do is this is going to, um, with the, the completion of our, uh, water system master plan that we've identified potential projects, uh, it, and updated the capital improvement plan, that's going to update the, the rate study for the, for the next five years. Um, so we do have that for, uh, your consideration tonight and approval.
Okay. Um, there is a suggested motion. Would someone like to make that?
Sure.
David.
I can make it, I don't care.
I move to authorize the CUE to execute an agreement with Raftellus for an updated rate study, financial model and related services for the not to exceed amount of $25,000.
Thank you, Mr. Ricky. Is there a second?
A second.
Well, let's let Mr. Mandela give him a chance. Mr. Mandela, a second. Uh, is there a further discussion on this?
When, when are they going to deliver?
I was going to say, what's the timing?
So once, uh, if this is, uh, if this is approved, uh, we will set up a, a virtual meeting. Um, again, all the heavy lifting was done originally. So, um, Mr. Logan was not here when we had the original, uh, study done, so he will, he will primarily lead it for, from staff perspective. Um, but two to three months is what they, uh, they indicated to have that, that finalized. And again, this is a not to exceed amount. There is some, uh, I guess consultation hours that are built into that price. So we don't expect that it's going to reach the $25,000, uh, amount, uh, but there is some in there if we have some additional, uh, you know, if something came up that we say, look, we need to pivot because we need to do this project now, uh, sooner than later and they need to make some changes, we can consult with them.
I think it's a great, uh, planning resource that we added a few years ago. A little less voodoo, a little more science. Pretty happy with it. Uh, anyone else with any comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. All right, uh, let's go on to, um, the collective bargaining agreement, Mr. Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the current collective bargain. Yes, yes. Uh, the current collective bargaining agreement with our, our union employees expires, uh, December 31st, uh, of this year. Uh, and so, uh, Mr. Urnic, Mr. Logan and other members of our leadership team, we met with, uh, the union, uh, leadership and negotiated, uh, a tentative agreement, uh, for a new three-year contract. Uh, did provide in, uh, your, your board packets, uh, a, um, summary, uh, memo, uh, that kind of talked about the highlights. Uh, one of the items that we've struggled with over the last few years has been, um, uh, attraction and even retention of some of our staff. And our, uh, lower, um, steps on the pay scale, uh, were, were part of the reason. So what the first year of this contract does is it updates the seven-step wage scale. Um, we took the current wage step, uh, scale and basically shifted everything. So we, we got rid of the current step one, that becomes the new step one, you know, in January. Um, so the, the step two now would be step one. Um, there's about, I believe, 14 employees that that is, it's variable. It's going to affect, uh, the raises that they're, they're going to see January 1st as well as in April, when they get their, um, their mandatory step increases as part of their progression. Um, but overall in 2026, for you, for bargaining unit employees, it's an average of about 6% increase, uh, for, for all union members. Uh, and then years two and three of the agreement, uh, is 3% and 3% of each of those years. Um, and there were some adjustments to, um, licensed stip, uh, stipends. We pay out licensure stipends, uh, once a year at various times. Uh, so those were increased accordingly. Again, in the, uh, the one thing that we, uh, we all agreed on, uh, union leadership and our, um, non-bargaining leadership team is, uh, attracting the best, the best of the best. And so these are, these are tools that we can u- utilize to do that. Uh, so, um, there really weren't, weren't many changes. We, we cleaned up some ambiguous language and whatnot, uh, that we, we all agreed on. Uh, but overall, we, we feel it's a, uh, a, a good agreement and we do have that, uh, recommended for approval.
Okay. Um, and can you illuminate, uh, what the, um, how the consensus of 633, how that was arrived at? On what basis is the first year higher? Is that resulting in some prior low increases and so on?
It was. If, if you recall, um, you know, two, two contracts ago, not the current contract, but the one prior to that was negotiated during the pandemic. And there was so, there was a lot of uncertainty. Uh, again, we talked a little bit ago about customers not, some not being able to pay, uh, because they were out of work and whatnot. Um, so we negotiated the contract and I had asked union employees at that time, I said, I, we need to make sure that we're all going to, we're going to have a stable organization. And they, uh, while we increased some stipends, the overall pay raises were very low. Um, and, you know, we, we agreed at that time that we would play catch-up, um, in subsequent contracts, which last contract we did, their current contract, we, uh, we did make up a little bit, but this is again, to keep us, um, you know, towards the top that we're attracting top talent, um, you know, when, when it comes to a, a wage rate. Um, so that, that was, uh, the determination. Um, again, when we look at, um, you know, inflation certainly has, um, has calmed down, uh, but we did have during this current contract, we did have a couple of years of some, uh, you know, significant increases in, in inflation. Uh, another thing that was negotiated this year, uh, it, actually last year is we saw a rate increase for 2025 of health insurance rate. If we signed though, for a two-year, we would have no rate increase in health insurance for 2026. So, um, they make up a little bit of ground there, um, with, with these raises.
Okay, but you feel overall, and obviously the, uh, uh, union membership feels it's an equitable, uh, amount and, you know, 3% in the ensuing years is pretty, pretty ordinary.
It is. And yes, the, the union, uh, membership did officially vote on this. They have, uh, um, approved to ratify this. Um, and, uh, that's why we have it before you for your approval.
Okay, it used to be a great, uh, you know, contest between, uh, you know, this, uh, organization and what the city was giving the firemen and the police and all that. It kind of has, I don't hear about that anymore, so I guess everybody's happy there too.
I, I can't speak for, for that. I just know that, uh, we, our, this three-year contract is on a different cycle of when it will expire compared to the service department, uh, city hall employees, police, fire, um, and they.
Another change that we deliberately made, so we're not like, hey, hey, you can't do that, that kind of thing.
Correct.
Kind of put them on a different cycle so that memories are, uh, you know, a little bit fuzzy when it comes around the next time.
Yes.
Anyway, good strategy. Uh, looks like a good deal all the way around. So, um, I'll make the, uh, motion, uh, recommended motion. Uh, I move to authorize the chairman of the board and the CUE to execute the collective bargaining agreement dated November 3rd, 2025 between the Avon Lake Board of Municipal Utilities and USW Local 1-865 and to be effective on January 1st, 2026. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Ricky. Further discussion?
Just.
Hearing none, we'll close discussions. Oh, sorry, I didn't see your hand.
No, I just, uh, wanna, I, I did review the, the document and, uh, I think that, uh, it's a good contract for, uh, us as a board, but it's also a great contact, contract for our employees as well. And it, it shows our caring in retaining employees, which I think is what makes this organization a great organization, is we are able to retain the best of the best and, and we're willing to share, uh, in our success with our union. And I think that's all a very, very important part. And goes a long way, uh, in the middle of night when you have to call people out and make, uh, emergency repairs.
Always on the water line.
No. So I think that it goes a long way to, to, to help that whole situation. So I really believe that it's a, a good working relationship with our union and that's important to have this wrapped up. And I commend, uh, staff for getting this wrapped up as quickly as they have and we can, uh, move on without having to worry about this for the next three years.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Ricky. Um, any other comments? All right, we'll take the vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion passes. Okay, next, uh, item is Mr. Urnic and his project updates.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chunks of a thousand words.
Unfortunately, I could not get any pictures, uh, from the power plant site. I did speak with their project manager, Mr. Wayne Woodruff. Um, there has been no change in their scope. They are planning on being demobilized by the end of the month. Um, they're going to be making contact with us. They have their temporary construction office, um, on the south side of Lake Road. They're going to be removing that, will be, um, discontinuing water and sewer to that building. Um, so we'll be taking care of that in the coming weeks. Um, any questions on that?
Uh, I do have a question. Uh, I think in the last meeting, you indicated that all the demolition was done, but in driving by, I see, I would say, three or four buildings are still standing and a big smokestack. I know this isn't our project, it's the city's, but is there some reason those are still standing when demolition is done? Mr. Monroe?
I, I can speak to that somewhat. What I, in, in inquiries that I made, um, I, I was told the, um, there is a brick building that is located, um,
On the east.
On the east end of the site, uh, close to, closer to Lake Road. Um, and I asked about that, um, and there, uh, has been some, um, inquiries from potential developers that may want to re-retain that building. Um, and the, uh, the city is in their due diligence on the environmental is in court, that's in court, part of it as well. Um, but if it's, you know, deemed to be, um, something that's not going to be used or there's environmental that needs to be remediated, um, that ALARG would then, they would demolish that building.
In other words, they still have an obligation.
Yes.
In there, okay? Cause I.
Yes.
I mean, to me personally, again, it's not our project, but a clean slate would be preferable in my opinion.
Yeah. And so I, I guess to, um, review what we talked about at our last meeting with what Mr. Urnic said, all, currently all scheduled demolition is complete.
I must have missed that.
I, 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 I don't know if it was said, but that's what I'm.
Correct.
You know?
Okay.
Clarify.
Well, let me schedule Mr. Ricky for his comments.
Well, yeah, I just, quick question too, you know, there's still two mountains of concrete there. There's still, the basement hasn't been filled and I thought it was going to be a greenfield site when it was done, but apparently this is the agreement they came to, that, the work they've done.
Again, I, I, we.
We, we didn't run the job, but I mean, I just was expecting more of a greenfield site and, and grass sheet planted and straw sprayed and they're walking away. You know, that's kind of how we finish up jobs, uh, like that. So I was just kind of surprised that there's still some concrete to process, I think, or uh, to crush and move off-site, but apparently that may be staying or maybe used in the future, I guess.
The way it was presented to me is they have completed their.
Their part of it.
Contract obligations. Unless anything changes.
Gotcha. All right.
Okay, thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Urnic. Want to go on to, uh, the water filtration plant improvements? You do have some pictures.
I do have a couple of pictures. So here we have the freshly poured and cured base that is going to, that is going to be where they're going to install the PAC silos, the powdered activated carbon. The existing plant, when it's delivered, it gets mixed into a tank, into a water slurry. These are going to hold the dry product. Um, they've completed all of the conduits. Those mounts are what is going to attach those two. I've shown pictures at previous meetings, the very large white cylinders. Um, so in the coming, I believe, beginning of December is when they're going to, um, install those.
That water tower will be coming down, uh, as part of the challenge, right?
Um, as, yes, we are going to have some additional demolition, um, at the site. Um, that's going to be bid out, uh, beginning of the year.
Yeah, or originally when we bid this project, we also bid the demolition work. Uh, we did not award, the board authorized me to execute the contract to award it, but we did not because the, um, apparent low bidder did not include hazardous, any hazardous material, um, uh,
Disposal.
disposal. And so because it was, you can't demo any of that until all of the new, um, improvements are online.
Right.
It was going to be a year and a half. So we said, we will rebid the project. When we rebid the demolition work, uh, for the water filtration plant, we will also include the division.
That's what I thought, yeah. That's going to come down.
And that, uh, as Mr. Urnic said, we, we think that we're, that'll probably go out in January for bid. Again, it's going to be at the earliest, the end, towards the end of next year.
Right, yeah.
But that's the plan.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Urnic.
All right. So this is the new filters that are being constructed. You can see the existing building over on this side. That's on the western part of the property. We're standing, looking south from inside the plant. Um, they've been pouring and forming across the top. Can't really see from this picture, but the roof support structure, their goal is to really get that enclosed before we start getting into really inclement weather. Um, that'll help them throughout the winter, their work area. But you can see that part of the improvement is really taking shape here. This is a view from inside the new fluoride feed building. Um, very similar looking to probably when we presented pictures from the ortho phosphate feed, um, same manufacturer, very similar. Um, we're currently in the process of testing all of this equipment. Um, both tanks are filled with treated drinking water. As I mentioned in the past, it's always been our standard safety procedure. When you've got new equipment, we test it out with water. That gives us the opportunity to verify pump speeds, dosages, that everything scales appropriately as we change flows, that the chemicals will increase or decrease, um, as we expect. Um, testing everything out this week. According to Water Filtration Plant Manager Gimney, everything has been progressing very well. There haven't been any surprises. Um, so if everything looks good by the end of the week, we will be ordering our first load of fluoride and we'll be done with that Belgian sourced, uh, solid material that we've always used in the past.
Anybody with questions on that? Okay, go ahead.
Moving on to the Techwind project. Um, we had, as I mentioned before, we were waiting delivery of a replacement probe. Um, we've received those, been installed, calibrated, verified. Um, while we were down for that replacement, we wanted to get the chiller equipment winterized. When those systems shipped initially, it was water throughout the chiller. To be on the safe side during the winter, we wanted to replace that with something that would not possibly freeze. As soon as that process is completed, we'll go back to operating the equipment, testing the product and proceeding through NSF certification.
Okay, I mean, expected completion date?
They're scheduled to complete the winterization of the chiller. They're hoping by the end of this week. They were waiting on delivery of the material. So then we would expect, we would be producing product next week and can go through the testing then.
The NSF, how long does that take?
The only thing we really have left is just the verification of the chemical. We wanted to proceed with a couple of tests through our own lab just so we can know what we're getting ourselves into, verify the products as expected.
And they'll take the third party.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Questions on the Techwind project for Mr. Juranic? Okay, go on with the water bundle.
All right. So the picture on the left is just an example. So as they have installed the new water lines, the Delwood, Inwood and Bel Air area, they install a new service copper line. You can see that running there. We had some other work on Electric Boulevard that's shown over here. That is a 20-inch line that was installed in 1955. The valves on that water line during our valve exercising, part of our asset management program, those valves were failing. The type of valve is not something that can be repaired. So as part of this project, we were going through and replacing those. There's total eight valves that we were going to be replacing. We did the first one last week, preparing to do the second one, kind of work through that. That way, because a couple of those valves were, were found to be non-operable. They wouldn't isolate any areas. So if we had any breaks or scheduled shutdowns, we're currently having to shut down a much larger portion of that line than what we would like. So as part of the continuous improvement, we wanted to go through and make sure that all the valves in our system work as intended.
Mr. Juranic, and I sympathize with any 1955 thing that might not be what it once was. But did we discover the valves failures using our valve exercising program? So there's a result, in other words, of catching something by preventive maintenance rather than whoops? The whoops method.
That's correct.
Is this all part of the bundle? They're doing this, this was already in the bundled project because we determined, okay.
We had identified.
If this was an extra or not, I wasn't sure.
No, we identified this prior to, you know, during design.
Gotcha.
We knew that these valves needed work. So we included it as part of the project.
We got the valves and we got everything. We need to do it.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Pouring in, you know, whatever, how much are those valves?
I don't recall.
The braves of my house in 1955.
Yeah, 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 they're, they're significant. It's pre-stressed concrete cylinder pipe, that 20-inch. I remember we, when we did exploratory digging and dug up one of those valves, it, it was one of those, we kind of wanted to take it out and send it to the Smithsonian.
Right.
You know, as a.
For real?
Yeah.
Put it next to the eight-foot tall skull.
One last question, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Ricky. Have we started replacing meters now? Is, is, Cam, you started replacing meters from inside to outside? Are we moving ahead on that?
Yes.
Are we on time? Are we feeling, I mean, we can continue to do that during the winter, you think? Okay, that's the plan.
Yeah, they, they started first with any of our areas that were unidentified service lines because of our requirements for the lead service line identification program. So they started with any that were unknown or there were some that were known. So they, they began, they began that process.
And that's moving along pretty good?
KMU is a subcontractor, has been, from reports I, I get from staff, they've been working well.
Well, you know, it's important because they're going in people's homes where, you know, doing stuff on their streets, one thing, but when you have to go in people's basements or, you know, things, I just, we, we need to be shoe covers and, and be very professional and make sure our contractors are representing this properly. That's all they want to make sure.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Juranic?
How does this start, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much. CUE report, Mr. Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have two quick items. Mr. Juranic does have one item. My first item is just a reminder, we currently have our information technology, our IT, RFQ is out. We have, it's due this Friday, November 21st. We've actually already received two submittals for that. So we're hoping that we continue to get those in so that we can begin our process of reviewing them and moving forward with that.
Okay.
And the second item I have has to do with, as we talk about our planning, and we, we've talked about this before, but we just received today the proposed scope for an amendment with HDR for our next improvement in expansion at the water filtration plant. And we have not received the, the fee proposal, but again, if, if you recall, there's a portion of this that will be reimbursed as part of the All Ohio Future Fund that we partnered with the county on for the potential development for a advanced technology campus site in New Russia Township. So hope to have that at an upcoming meeting for discussion with the board and subsequent approval.
Quick question. How are we doing with them on this project as far as requests for information? RFIs, are we writing a lot of them or are we, I mean, I want to just kind of see how the engineering was for, for quote unquote, phase one, this first expansion, just to see how the engineering was? And did we run into any surprises? Are we on any, do we have any major over, over?
There's, there's no major change orders.
Change orders.
There's, there's been several change orders, but for the, for the most part, there's been more credits back than.
But it looks like the engineering was pretty complete.
Yeah, the engineering was. I, I will say that during the construction, or I'm sorry, the bidding phase, there was questions received from potential bidders. There was, I think that addressed a lot of RFIs at that point. We did run into typical project issues when you're dealing with
Underground.
Infrastructure that was, has been built in phases over many decades. So overall though, I, we, we're very pleased with.
That's, I guess that's really what my, my point was. Are we pleased with what we got on this first phase to go ahead and start thinking about proceeding to the second phase or, and again, excuse me for calling him what I am, but I'm just, you understand, that I just want to make sure that we're happy with the engineering we got because that sure makes a difference in how well the project runs. And when you've got to make tie-ins on, and keep the plant running, these are all important things that have to be considered when engineering is put together.
And I will say just to the engineering, yesterday, our new engineering services manager, Aaron Klein, started. He's getting settled in quite nicely, but his experience in Sandusky as the public works director, he was involved in many plant projects at the water and wastewater facilities. So he will be, as we start moving into that next phase of design and whatnot, he'll be heavily involved with all.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Monroe, Mr. Juranic and the CUE report.
Yes, I have a, a quick update, just step increases. Operator at the water reclamation facility, Jeff Lopez. When he was hired, one of the things that we have done to attract talent is offer a step increase should they get an additional license. On October 21st, he successfully earned his class three wastewater license. So on that date, he moved to step four at $34.33 per hour. And he was hired on November 11th of last year. So per the collective bargaining agreement, he will receive a step increase to step five on the 11th, $37.07.
Was he, was he a line reader or inspector or?
No.
No. He's not, I'm thinking of somebody else. Okay, very good.
He came from Rocky River. He was an operator at their facility.
Very good. Well, that's great.
Well, a little, little more bench depth, you know?
Absolutely.
As we move towards the playoffs. Mr. Mondello, anything?
All good.
Okay. Next item is member reports and miscellaneous. Any members with reports or miscellaneous?
Oh, I attended the LORCO meeting last Thursday evening and really nothing to really report.
Okay. Well, anyone else? Okay, let's close that. Next item is public input. Gentlemen in the audience, please walk to the microphone. Mr. Phillips, I welcome you. You'll have to tell us about your address.
Gerald, Gerald Phillips, Avon Lake, 20-year resident. I'd like to thank Mr. Logan for his excellent financial presentation. And he made a very compelling argument and strong position why we should become part of Clearwater. We're financially sound. We don't need to weaken our financial position. So thank you, Mr. Logan. Those numbers were impressive. You know, Avon Lake Regional Water, their facility is the best. It's the gem in northeast Ohio. We don't need the Clearwater. Now, a little concerned about this Rattellis report in '23. When they did the Clearwater, he already did a report for those rate studies in that feasibility study, which I believe was up to 2025. So I'm questioning why we need to do that again. I mean, I don't think it's very complicated to do a rate study. Mr. Monroe indicated that we didn't need to raise rates for 2025, but yet we're paying $25,000. As far as the interest, you know, the interest has to be allocated to the enterprise fund or else it's illegal. When we talk about cash on hand, you know, one of the things you need to look at is working capital. You know, working capital is current assets minus current liabilities. And that's a better analysis rather than looking at how many months of expenses you have. The problem with that and, and, and some of the numbers he showed as far as the annual revenues, well, it probably includes my favorite subject, LORCO, that doesn't pay their bills. And I went to LORCO's meeting. I saw their financial statements where they collect, you know, $100,000 a month, so about $1 million, and they don't pay their bills. So when we look at those ratios, they'd be a lot better if they paid their bills. And we got $15 million of outstanding debt. So that needs to be done. The average interest rate, I think it's less than three and a quarter as far as the Ohio Development Water Authority. The cash on hand is good. You can do a sweep account on the cash and use STAR. STAR is better than 5/3. Now, as far as the money owed, when Bucky Coffe owed money, you sued him. But we're not suing LORCO. So I'm glad Mr. Coin's here because now I can make a taxpayer demand that a legal action be brought by this board to collect the $15 million. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Mr. Zimmerman?
William Zimmerman. So in attending the LORCO meeting this past, I guess it was five days ago on Thursday, they, they were doing their financial meeting before the seven o'clock meeting. Didn't tell us about that. But we were early, so we were able to sit in. And at no point did they allow us to have public comment during that as well. So as a starting point, LORCO not only owing us money, or Avon Lake Regional Water, owing money, but then the way that they conduct themselves in almost a secretive manner makes me never want to do business with them again. And yet, Mr. Logan, and I'll second the idea, did an excellent presentation. It was very informative and I, I appreciate numbers like that as much as the accountant does. So anyhow, the only thing I have a problem with is that nowhere in those numbers are LORCO's numbers, the receivables. And at some point, I told LORCO, look, if you're not going to pay, we'll collect. And so as Mr. Phillips has now indicated to you, we'll collect if you guys won't. And I think that this is only about the betterment of the citizens of Avon Lake. It shouldn't be about anything else because y'all have done your job. We've all been good stewards. We've tried to help and all we've gotten was Dirk kicked in our face and said, pound salt. And from my perspective, that's the wrong attitude. We're going to kill the 6119. So it's not going to ever happen. Vermillion and the whole west side over there is such a mess that that's going to be easy to end that. And as long as Mr. Shamir and some others have what I consider to be an ounce of thought instead of just trying to pass stuff and move it along and bring Rattellis in again and all of that. I've called Cincinnati half a dozen, 10 times. They won't return my call because they know I'm asking questions. These people are dirty. Everybody's corrupt. And I would hope we would stand above that.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Let's see, what do we have now? We have anything on Mr. Juranic's screens? Okay, then let's, we have a call for an executive session. And let's see, Mr. Mondello, would you like to read the motion for executive session?
Mr. Chairman, before we read the motion, I just want to state that we do not anticipate any formal action by the board upon reconvening the public meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Monroe. Mr. Mondello?
Sure, I move to meet. Executive session is allowed by Ohio Revised Code RC Section 121.22G3 to discuss pending or imminent court action and to include the CUE, CUEO and a representative from Nanzerkan.
Thank you, Mr. Mondello. Can I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Schnabel. This will be a roll call vote. Mr. Ricky?
Yes.
Mrs. Schnabel?
Yep.
Mr. Mondello?
Aye.
Chairman votes yes. We will move into executive session when the room is clear. Thank you, everyone who has stayed with us this long. I hope you all have a happy and safe Thanksgiving and we will see you, is it two weeks?
Yeah.
Two weeks from today? And I guess we'll be moving into the last couple of meetings of the year and there'll be a lot of financial type things in those meetings. So thank you all and good night.